Please rise for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We could all just stand for a minute, please. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Ed Morissette Sr., who passed away. His funeral was today. Ed was a policeman for the city of Mount Clemens from 1951 to 1978. He retired. But he also started and founded the Traffic Safety Committee back in 1966, and he was on that committee until 2015. So I think that really shows this man had a love for his city, and he'll be greatly missed by many of us. So if we could have a moment of silence, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Fournier.
Here.
Mencer.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports.
We need a mayor. We get a motion to excuse Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion to excuse Commissioner Crap.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Okay, now, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. We have tonight a presentation of the City of Mount Clemens Local Treasurer Award to Nancy Donahue. And Nancy, I am going to have the person who nominated you read what she sent us.
Requires glasses.
So Commissioner Mencer, would you please share with us?
This was the nomination form I filled out for the local treasurer for Nancy Donahue. And it asks us to describe your accomplishments and contributions. So Nancy has been active in the PTA, or was active in the PTA at Edison Elementary School, and served as a Girl Scout leader there. She was also active in the Mount Clemens Civic Center where her three daughters took baton lessons. She escorted the Mount Clemens majorettes to many parades. All three daughters, Sherry, Cindy, and Georgie, graduated from Mount Clemens High School. She worked 28 years as an administrative assistant at our local YMCA. She created volunteer work program to help low-income residents attain memberships. She started the nursery program. She also worked with the homeless, pregnant teens, the trustees, and many other residents and businesses. Nancy is president of the Mount Clemens Beautification Committee and is responsible for obtaining Mount Clemens Historical Home Plaque. She is vice president of the Clinton Grove Cemetery, a member of the Mount Clemens Historical Commission, the Crocker House, and she has worked on our bicentennial committee throughout this year and last. She also served on the Historic District Study Committee and the city's Affirmative Action Board. She has resided in her home on Eastman for 68 years. Nancy's long commitment and involvement have truly made Mount Clemens a better place to live, work, and play.
It is my great pleasure to present the Local Treasurer Award for Nancy Donahue. I'm the advocate myself and the city commission. Nancy Donahue is presented with an annual Local Treasurer Award for exemplary positive contributions to the city of Mount Clemens. Through her actions, Ms. Donahue has created a positive and lasting legacy for all members of our community to appreciate and be extremely proud of. Nancy Donahue is hereby declared a Local Treasurer on the 19th day of February 2019.[288.62][288.62](applause) Here's another person right here who loves his city and who is proud of, probably what, 60 years?
More.
More?
Yes.
Has devoted her volunteer time in this city. So these are the people we have to be proud of and follow in their footsteps. Congratulations.
Do we have any other? No? No? Okay. Adoption of the agenda? Need a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Okay, public participation time. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. The mic is open.
My name is Kevin Hushtek, H-U-S-T-E-K. I live at 109 Marrow Street, and I'm coming here tonight. My wife and I, we've lived in our house this September, will have been a decade. We love the city. We love living here. Just last week, we experienced something that I've been seeing a lot of buzz on different social media forums about, in the city, about recycling that isn't getting picked up. And I don't typically like to participate in that stuff online because it's not always productive. But so last week, we had our recycling, which hasn't changed for the past almost decade that we've lived at our house, wasn't picked up. And I went and looked through all of the stuff, and then I went to the Mount Clemens City website and verified that the policy or the items in there haven't changed, and nothing of that sort had changed. So I contacted DPS and left a message for, just the person's first name is Becky, and I left just a brief explanation of the issue and left my phone number to contact me back. And I haven't heard anything back from the office. It was picked up by a city truck the following day, but I had also reached out to Commissioner Mencer as well, rather than going on Facebook and posting about it. But then today, the same thing happened. So I just got home from work and saw my box as the only one on our street, went back through and looked at everything, and I would invite anybody on this body or city officials to come that way tomorrow so it can be picked up, but also evaluate it and see if something in there isn't supposed to be in there. But I looked back at my Ring camera, and I saw the person picked up a random box that we had next to it that had recycling in it, threw it in the recycling truck, and then just looked in the bin and walked away from it. So I'm going to save that video clip. But I just wanted to come express it just because we haven't changed anything. We love the city. I don't know what's changed, if there's some kind of tension between the city offices and whoever's doing the recycling, but we've never had this issue before. So I know you can't respond. I'm familiar with the policy just from working for a public school, but I just wanted to voice my concerns, and hopefully that can be looked into and find out what's going on. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Joe E. Harrington, 152 Court Street here in the city of Mount Clemens. The issue of medical marijuana. Mayor Dempsey, I respect and openly support and have endorsed you on occasion, so it's nothing against you as a good mayor. There are small blocks of voters in my neighborhood, and other small blocks make up the entire city of Mount Clemens that vote you all commissioners and mayor in. We might not agree with this commission and mayor's vote on yes on things pushing medical marijuana forward like you have been doing. Don't want to be like Washington, D.C., out of touch with the people, with we the people, and more in touch with power, money, lobbyists, corporations, and business. Maybe you care more about Alasand Corporation. For one thing, I am not for something that prevents employment and job opportunity. Medical marijuana showing up on a drug test for a job physical for the state of Michigan, the county of McComb, the city of Mount Clemens, et cetera, will not be hired, and a random drug test would result in being fired. I wouldn't want police firing doctors, lawyers, teachers, or such with medical marijuana in this system. If I don't want it for myself and my loved ones, I don't want it for you or anyone else. It's like the Flint water. That aside, location, change is inevitable. The old big boy property stagnant many years, love to unload it and be valuable, but medical marijuana is a bad fit. It's not a Dan Gilbert, or a community development, or an Amazon. It's a bad fit. In a residential neighborhood that's already suffering with drugs, crime, poverty, bad enough to marathon gas stations, school kids and future ones would have to walk past such as this daily. It's a bad fit. Medical marijuana is more of a front, which will be obsolete, and it's a forerunner for recreational marijuana, which is to follow. At the zoning meeting, a retired police official, one of the first of the DARE program, which stands for Drug Abuse Resistance Education, said that it was a bad fit for the community and for the kids. He said it would have a negative, bad effect on them. He also said that for $60, the doctor's inn on Cass Avenue will give a medical marijuana card to anyone for any reason. Leslie Tyer and that family didn't want it for a business neighbor. To be honest with you, residents in that immediate area, we feel this location for medical marijuana has to do with, and is a factor of, not all, in my opinion, but some, race. Force-feeding it, dumping it on and in the black neighborhood. What's next? Community development, zoning board, mayor, and city commissioners voting yes for a sex-dial brothel? There's money in it, you know. I and the residents and the neighbors and voters in the affected area are vehemently adamant opposed to this medical marijuana business. If I, if what I say doesn't change your mind on voting yes on the marijuana issues, which not all of you voted for, but the mayor and three making it a majority, then prove me wrong and vote for it to be exactly where you live, and watch how fast the votes change from yes to no. You, we, Mount Clemens, don't have to have medical marijuana. This could have been nipped in the bud in the beginning if you'd have just voted no on such as to begin with. Suggestion, anyone participating in public participation, as you've already stated. State your name, your residential address, and your residential address if you don't live in the city of Mount Clemens, and your business address if you do live in the city of Mount Clemens. Also, welcome to hear the remarks of Ms. Mencer in regards to Stevenson's comments. And a question, is this commission and mayor allowed or permitted to accept monetary contributions or donations for campaigns, or et cetera, or anything? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. I come before you as we the people, and this August board was elected to represent the people, to listen to our voices and to listen to our First Amendment rights. As the Honorable John Dingle did, let's start having conversations with each other about what is important to the citizens of this city and not just the business entities. A lot of the cities across southeastern Michigan right now are voting against this medical marijuana, even to be in their cities and things like that. So when this comes back before you, consider the impact that it's going to have on the city. There's Gibraltar, there's Grossbeck, but to put it within the city, you're taking away the viability of a city. And what you're going to bring into the city is not going to be positive for the citizens of Mount Clemens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Wendy Cott, 68 Robertson Street, Mount Clemens. I just want to say that there are five churches located within a few blocks of the proposed dispensary. Martin Chapel, Spiritual Israel Church, Zion Temple, the Church of the Living God, and the North Broadway Church of Christ. All five churches have Sunday morning services that often dismiss at close to the same time. The only north-south street that goes all the way through from those areas is Walnut Street. To put a medical marijuana dispensary on the corner of Walnut and northbound M3 or Grashit is setting up a traffic situation that could prove to be very dangerous, with people pulling out of Walnut Street onto Grashit and traffic trying to pull onto Walnut Street or into the parking lot of that building. And with traffic moving at a speedy flow on northbound Grashit, you are asking for a tragedy. If someone makes a sudden stop to turn right onto Walnut and they are rear-ended, it would push them directly into traffic waiting at the traffic light to cross Walnut or to turn north on Grashit. During the summer, our churches have vacation Bible school, and many of our students walk from that very neighborhood. Traffic pulling in and out of the parking lot and blocking the sidewalk could be very dangerous for the children. One year and three months ago, I came to the city meeting and begged the city to put a traffic light on Cass Avenue at Row Street because of the children crossing that intersection going to Prevail Academy. I was told that the county would have to handle it. Less than six months later, a Prevail Academy teacher was killed at that very intersection helping children cross the street. I'm sincerely asking that the city of Mount Clemens select another location for a medical marijuana dispensary. Downtown Mount Clemens has adequate space, streetlights, parking, and is not in a residential area with children, and would be a much safer and appropriate location. Please consider the safety of the church members, residents, and children who travel that location and would be at risk for involvement in a traffic accident. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Administrative responses to issues or questions raised during a previous meeting.
A resident asked if the Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance was designed to illustrate where they could be located and what the difference was between central business and general commercial zoning. The Mount Clemens Medical Marijuana Facilities Ordinance, number 20.110, has been established and has specific requirements that must be met in determining a location that can be occupied as such. The ordinance defines the types of zoning districts allowable based upon the State of Michigan guidelines where certain medical marijuana facilities can be located. The full ordinance can be found on the city's website at www.cityofmountclemens.com, under the Code of Ordinances link or under Helpful Information. The different zoning districts throughout the city, such as general commercial or central business, allow for different types of uses in that specific zoning district. The permitted uses for these particular zoning districts can be found in the Zoning Ordinance Number 15.083, Section 8.3, and Number 15.084, Section 8.4, also available on the city's website under the Code of Ordinances link.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the minutes from February 4, 2019.
Roll call.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, General Business, 9A, introduction and first reading of amendments to Section 8.2A and Section 9.2A and Section 9.3A of the zoning ordinance. Need a motion?
Move to approve the introduction and first reading of amendments to Section 8.2A and Section 9.2A and Section 9.3A of the zoning ordinance, and set March 4, 2019, as the date for the second reading and adoption.
Support.
The Planning Commission has recommended amendments to the zoning ordinance that include Section 8.2A, Section 9.2A, and Section 9.3A regarding the permitting of medical marijuana facilities as authorized by City of Mount Clemens Ordinance Number 20.110, which was adopted by the city commission on December 17, 2018. A public hearing was held by the Planning Commission on February 5, 2019. At that meeting, the Planning Commission passed a motion by 7-0 vote recommending that the city commission approve the proposed amendment.
Questions? Comments?
I would appreciate if we could just reiterate that, and make sure that I understand this correctly, that the dispensaries are only going to be allowed in general commercial, light industrial, not in the central business district. Is that correct?
Correct.
So if they're, the central business district will not have any dispensaries under the current ordinance, and we have not made any changes to that?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's limited to two dispensaries.
Correct.
In the entire city.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So this is basically the same ordinance that we discussed, and there's no changes.
This is the ordinance that was approved for medical marijuana facilities set forth that could be placed in, light industrial and heavy industrial, any of the five types of licenses, and that in the general commercial district, that a provisioning center would be allowed as a permitted use. So these are amendments to the zoning ordinances in effect that spell out what permitted uses are in each district. So we are adding the medical marijuana to the appropriate districts.
That was just a point of emphasis so that people would understand.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes. 9B, approved purchase and payments of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Commissioner Mencer.
I just had a question about the water utility fund, the new ozone generation. There is a $350,000 difference between the two bids we got. I just, that's massive. I wondered if there was a particular reason.
We've seen this with the same, that same company that was the high bid at least what I'm looking at as well. I don't.
They just didn't want it.
Yeah, not sure.
Okay. Does it have something to maybe do with warranties, or? No?
No.
Okay.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Fournier.
Yes.
Mencer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Consent agenda. Need a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda as presented. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mencer.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Fournier.
Yes.
City managers' report.
The city commission will meet to review the 2019 fiscal year budget on Monday, April 8, and Tuesday, April 9, at 5:00 p.m. in the second floor conference room at City Hall. And refuse pickup will run on schedule throughout the month of February. Assessment notices will be in the mail on March 1, 2019. Board of review dates are Monday, March 18, from 9:00 a.m. until noon, and 1:30 p.m. till 4:30 p.m., and Tuesday, March 19, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. To schedule an appointment after you receive your assessment notice, please call 586-469-6818, extension four. And just a reminder that the 2019 dog and cat licenses are available in the treasurer's office at City Hall. Licenses renewed after February 28, 2019 will be subject to late. Sorry.
Any questions? No? Okay. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mencer.
The medical marijuana issue, the ordinance was approved by commission. This is a highly emotional issue, and I want to remind everybody that there have been no permits approved or issued. I think that there was some question about that, but there have been no permits at this point approved and issued. Congratulations to Nancy. Thank you for your service to the residents and the children of this city. I hope you have fun riding in that convertible in the parade at Christmas. Yes, repeatedly, repeatedly. So I had a question for my neighborhood, and I'll ask it of you guys. I shoveled three houses and three driveways, and I slipped and fell on the ice, and it took many, many, many aerobic moves to get up and stay up because I kept sliding on the same ice over and over again. So when you take all that into consideration, how many Girl Scout cookies do I get to eat? And that's my comments tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford.
I would like to thank the Downtown Development Authority for putting a very nice article in the paper about Mrs. Johnson. Very well done. Also, I'd like to thank Mr., what do I call him? Mr. Referee for a very nice job that you did February 5, handling a very hostile crowd. Job well done.
Thank you. Commissioner Fournier.
Congratulations, Mrs. Donahue. You're quite the example for the rest of the city to live up to, and it was a recognition very well deserved. Thank you very much for all you do. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Barton.
I will follow as the others and say congratulations to Nancy Donahue. You're an example for the entire city, and you are an inspiration to some of those who should be following behind you, and we do appreciate you. Also, I'd like to thank the Official Democratic Black Caucus of McComb County. They had a very delightful luncheon this past Saturday, at which point in time they also issued certificates, one of which to me, for community service. So I thank them for the recognition, and I thank them for also having a delightful I guess we'll go into the things of the week. This is, of course, it's American Heart Month, Black History Month, and National Children's Dental Month. And the third week of this month is national flirting. Now, I can't remember that this is the third week, or we missed it last week, but if it is this week, then go find somebody to flirt with. And tell them it's all a part of the month. Anyway, February 22, in 1732, George Washington was born. He was the father of our country. He became the chief of the Continental Army, and after the war, he became the first president of our newly formed United States of America. On February 28, is Public Sleeping Day. I was having a hard time finding something to celebrate, but anyway, Public Sleeping Day. You are encouraged to sleep in a public place. Most of these opportunities to sleep in a public place are hindered by the weather. Too little heat, too much cold to sleep in a park or on a park bench, on a beach, or anywhere in Michigan, anyway. But sleeping at work is also a poor option, but if you are looking for an opportunity to celebrate something this day, it may be your day to do so. From that, we'll go into black history. This is a pretty serious thing with me because there's a lot of things that get left out of our history that is never taught in school, and we just don't know about these things. We think that everything was invented by another race. All right, Frederick McKenney Jones invented refrigeration system for long-haul transportation of perishable goods. He also collaborated on the development of a system to sync sound with cinema. Charles Richard Drew, this is a sad case, he separated blood from plasma so that blood plasma could be stored, transported, and administered to people in risk of death due to loss of blood. And there was a comment that was made on the internet when I looked it up, is that the soldiers that were fighting in World War I didn't care who gave that blood if it saved their life. Ironically, he died because he was involved in a car accident, and a white hospital refused to give him a blood transfusion. Garrett Augustus Morgan, he was an inventor and a businessman, as well as an influential political leader. He was an inventor and a businessman, as well as an influential political leader. Morgan's most notable invention was a smoke hood. This is the prelude to smoke, to gas masks. And how it worked was there was a hood, and you put in the hood a place where the air would come through, and it would put just wet cloths, wet material. And as the air comes through that, it filtered the smoke out and people were able to breathe. His invention would allow people to use that for at least 30 minutes at a time. So that was pretty, pretty special. Morgan also discovered and developed chemical hair processing and straightening solutions. He created a successful company based on that discovery along with a complete line of hair products. This is one I really like. Mary Fields, also known as Stagecoach Mary and Black Mary. At the age of 60, she became the first African-American woman to have a star route mail carrier in the United States. She was only the second woman to ever work for the US Postal Service. And she was a marksman with the rifle and an expert in driving a team of six horses. There was also something in there that said she, if it snowed so that horses couldn't get through, she put on snowshoes and actually walked through and delivered the mail. That's going above and beyond. George Edwin Taylor, born 1857, died 1925. He was once the president of the National Negro Democratic League, and he felt disenfranchised by the Democratic Party. So he made the change to the newly formed National Negro Liberty Party and was selected to run for the office of President of the United States in 1904. Part of his platform was that Washington DC would have its own government. He also ran on the fact that they should abolish lynching of black people and that ex-slaves should get a pension. Of course, he was soundly defeated. Votes of the black people were not either, or not counted or denied, they were prevented, I guess is the way to say it. So anyway, those are some interesting things of black history that we don't know anything about or it's never, never mentioned. And, don't say that. Commissioner Wisdom. He who passively accepts evil is as much involved in it as he who helps to perpetrate it. He who accepts evil without protesting against it is really cooperating with it. And that's by Martin Luther King, both. And with that, we'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
A few years ago, when the local treasure award was first brought forward, it was to honor residents who have given time of themselves to make the city better. And tonight's award to Mrs. Donohue, who I've known many years, is well deserved. So thank you very much for all your service. That's it.
Well, ditto here, Nancy, to what everybody has said. It's a well-earned, hard-working. I know you work very hard on so many committees, and you've never once given up on any of them. Even when we get down to only a few people, we keep finding more people to join. But it's absolutely a well-deserved award, and you're an example for all of us. Thank you.
And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Ford.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Me adjourn.